The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, May 20th, 2019, 7:00 PM. I will ask Councilman Carrier to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations or a public hearing this evening, so I'll move into item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 6th, 2019 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements and reports tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary. I can always count on you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I attended the May meetings of the Conservation Commission and the Committee on Aging. Conservation Commission has actually had a very busy month. They did Quinnipiac Cleanup on Saturday, May 4th. They were at the Family Fest on May 11th distributing the Pollinator Plant Seeds and also bee watering stations which attract and help nourish and support bees because they're important pollinators and also attract hummingbirds who are awesome pollinators. And they have their annual hike planned for June 2nd. That is the Trails Day weekend for the whole state, actually. And Committee on Aging, the Senior Center again hosted a very successful statewide conference for grandparents raising grandchildren. Some of the painting and other related work at the Senior Center is nearing completion and it's really, really looking good. And on May 31st, they're going to have their annual volunteer brunch. And that's it.
Oh.
And with you and the town manager, of course, I was also at the Water Forum and I'm sure that, you know, I think the town manager and you'll be commenting on that.
Yes, I think he has some notes under his report that he'll be giving us about that. Thank you, Rosemary. Does anybody else have any announcements or reports to make? I do have one that I'd like to bring up to the council this evening. I attended last Monday's Board of Education meeting, which was pretty interesting. At that meeting, the valedictorian and salutatorian were presented to the board. That's always a huge accomplishment for the graduating students from Plainville High School. And there were two other students that were also recognized for their outstanding achievements as seniors. So those are fun things to go to and interesting to be a part of. But I also want to bring up, for your thoughts, we were recently, and this will come under the town manager's report as well, the town was recently given some information that we should be able to expect $15,700 in additional ECS appropriation from the State of Connecticut. Now, this, of course, is not going to be finalized until the state budget is completed. However, I would like your thoughts on a proposal that I think might be interesting and worthwhile. If we do get the $15,700 additional appropriation from the state for middle school sports, I would like to ask your support, and this doesn't always happen where we turn over any excess monies that we get from the state once the budget is finalized by the town, but I would ask for your support that we would forward the $15,700 to the Board of Education with a specific request that it be applied toward middle school sports. Middle school sports for the spring is due to be adjusted downward by $12,000. And I think that if we can go ahead and take this appropriation, if we get it, you know, it's all conditional on what the State of Connecticut does, if the council would be willing to appropriate that to the board with the condition that it's to be applied to middle school sports. Any thoughts on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I certainly would support sending the money over, but I would not publicly support only giving it to the board on the condition that they restore middle school sports. It's really their decision what to do with the money. Certainly, we could have conversations, I think, that indicate, you know, in our minds, you know, certainly that would cover the gap that they currently have. But to publicly state, "We're only going to give you the money if you restore middle school sports," I think we overstep our bounds in that respect. And I'd probably look to get an opinion from the town attorney on that if we could. You know, could we make such a motion or, you know, pass such a motion worded like that? But certainly, I have no problem forwarding the money on once it's approved, if it's approved. And, you know, certainly, I have no problem suggesting to the board what they can do with it.
Sure.
But I think we, you know, making it part of the motion might be a little bit more complicated than that.
Sure. And we can't actually do anything with this yet until we have the state budget finalized, which I have grave doubts they're going to meet their deadline, although I could be totally wrong about that. It's due in early June, so, and this is all part of that.
Yeah.
And I understand that, you know, once funds are distributed to the Board of Education, the monies can be used in wherever they see fit. However, and the reason I brought this up is because during our public hearing, a number of parents came to the town council public hearing and spoke about the reduction in middle school sports and their concern with that and the fact that their children will be affected by their ability to do some of these activities. I also would like to mention that at the Board of Education meeting last week, a number of parents also attended that meeting with the same concerns. They got up, they spoke very passionately about their children participating in middle school sports and the disappointment that would ensue if they were not able to fully fund their programs. So I think the parents have made their desires clear again. You know, as you said, we can't make anybody do anything, but perhaps we could make a suggestion that we are sensitive to those who came and spoke to us and those who spoke to the Board of Education about some of the specific needs that currently have a gap in their budget that maybe we could help with.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, whether or not it's a good idea, you know, I would personally have no problem with their, you know, using that money for that purpose. That would be fine with me personally. I just would want to be very careful in terms of how we act as a town council. It's always been my understanding that we cannot tell the board specifically how to spend funds.
Correct.
And just, and certainly, I just think we have to be, you know, careful and maybe the idea that Chris had of checking with the town attorney would be a good idea so that we make sure our procedure is exactly as it should be.
Okay. Understood.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I start by asking Mr. Buden? When in the year do we receive the ECS monies typically?
It's three times a year. We get 25% then another 25%, then 50% in April.
In April. I'm not opposed by any means of returning that money to the, or sending that money over to the Board of Education. However, I think before we make any suggestions, we should hear from the board at the appropriate time as to what the most glaring needs are at that point. I'm all for, you know, hey, if there's nothing on the table that is really lacking, then yeah, let's put it to the sports program. But if there's something else that really could use those funds and it's, you know, a higher priority, and I don't want to get into prioritizing what the board should be spending their money on because that's not my place as a town council member. But I think at that point, we should talk to the board and find out where, you know, what their use would be for it. But I am all in favor of sending that $15,700 back to the Board of Education.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair? I mean, I would, I don't know how the motion would look. I mean, I, like, it was, I already said a few times, we can't tell the board what to do, but I would publicly support a request for them to spend it in that direction. Whether they do or not, that is up to them.
Madam Chair? I feel the same way. I think that all of us would plan to give that ECS money back to the Board of Ed. I see no issue with that at all. I had agreed with the idea that we should request that it go towards those middle school sports where we had the biggest outbursts. I was never under the impression that we were going to make a motion to actually request them to put it towards that.
Right.
So I didn't think that we would do that anyway, but I am absolutely in support of requesting that they put it towards what our citizens came and asked for.
Yeah. I, as far as the technical process for this, we will be advised as to how to proceed with that when and if we get the money. You know, that's, that, again, I have to keep saying this, the state's budget is not finalized. However, we did get notification some time ago that we could expect a little bit more money of ECS money. It's not a lot, certainly compared in the grand scheme of the ECS grant that we typically get. It's a small amount of money. At this point in time, the teachers' retirement funding is still on the table to go to the towns. That's the last I've heard, that amount of money for Plainville is somewhere north of $100,000, and it is not my knowledge that that has been changed. So we do have an obligation, and of course, we're going to honor that. However, this particular item regarding middle school sports has been broadly talked about, both at the Board of Education meeting, social media, if we're going to use that as a barometer for making decisions, it's not always the greatest place to get decision-making, but that has been a topic out there. And at the last Board of Education meeting, parents came and certainly were hoping that something could be done so that the spring sports can be reinstated for all those who participate. So again, there's no action to be taken yet. There's nothing to do. I just thought I would bring that forward and we could certainly consider it. And if there's anything that we need to do for that, I'm sure Mr. Lee will let us know if there's anything we have to do to make those funds available for them, if and when they show up. So I do appreciate your input. Thank you for that. I don't have anything else unless somebody else has anything else to report tonight. Okay, we'll move on. We have a couple of appointments tonight, and I believe we are going to be hearing. Shall we hear from Rob first? Robert, before we go ahead and make that motion for the auditor or?
Yes, I believe he should.
Okay.
Hear his report and then a motion would be appropriate after that.
Okay. We have, our first appointment would be an auditor appointment, and our finance director, Rob Buden, has interviewed some firms, and he does have a recommendation tonight for us to go forward with us. So if you can just give us a little detail, that'd be great.
Sure. We sent out our proposal as we discussed during the budget process, and we got, we received bids from three different firms. One is our incumbent Bloom Shapiro. The other firm was RSM U.S. and PFK O'Connor-Davies. The bid prices range from $53,000 to $59,500. Our budget for the coming 2020 year is $53,000. We paid $52,000 last year for last year's audit. I know, you know, individuals from all three firms, you know, they're all well-known, they all have a lot of clients within the state. And based on, you know, what the fees came in at for various firms, only RSM came in with a multiple-year fee, which we are not inclined to look at. But their fee would go up about $10,000 over the next five years. O'Connor and Davies came in at about $6,500 higher than Bloom Shapiro did. So based on the competency of all the firms, our budget, you know, I'd recommend Bloom Shapiro will be reappointed as auditor for the 2019 audit.
Okay.
With a fee of $53,000.
Okay. Are there any questions for Rob regarding this recommendation? Rob, is that, do they, every, we're not locked into a certain specific number of years with this proposal? It's just year to year?
No. And as we've done probably for the last good number of years, we do year by year. We don't, we haven't had a multiple-year contract with an auditing firm since I've been here, anyway.
Okay.
That's about 12 years, so.
And you're satisfied with the work and?
Oh, yeah. They stepped up, they stepped up a lot more this past year than they have before we've had discussions, but they did fine this past year, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Having said that, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint the firm of Bloom Shapiro to conduct an audit for the Town of Plainville for the 2019 fiscal year.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Number two. Do we have any other appointments or resignations tonight that we don't have on our agenda? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Board of Education liaison, Mrs. Hardy?
Deb Hardy, 17 Maria Road. Good evening, everyone. The School Business Community Partnership that the school has offers a menu of options for local residents, businesses, and organizations to connect with Plainville schools. This helps our students to experience the jobs and decide if this is the job for them or not, which is something that we did years ago, but it seemed to have worked out very well. So this is something new and exciting for these kids to find out, do I really want to be a technician or a doctor? So we're excited about this. And also, Lori Peterson and myself attended the Teacher Leader Fellowship Program today, very informational. We attended the social-emotional learning in support of creativity, innovation, and collaboration, the implementation of the Teacher Leader Council. The purpose of this is how it aligns with district goals and strategic plans. So this is something else that we're looking at, and this is all I have to report for tonight. Questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I have a couple of items. The first one is the fiscal year 2020 budget update. Last Tuesday, the second all-day vote was held to consider the education budget. There were 1,235 persons who voted, which was 10.67% of the total eligible. The budget was passed overwhelmingly with 863 voting yes, which is 70% of those who voted, and those voting no totaling 369. Though the budget passed and the advisory question is not a factor, it is interesting to note, at least in my opinion, that the majority felt that the budget was too low with a vote of 286 versus 260, 260 who felt that it was too high. The second budget vote had 60% more participants than the first vote. Plus 467 voters. Almost the same amount of participants voted no on the education budget, you know, in both, both the votes. There were about the same number of no votes, very close, within 15 votes. And the yes votes to the education budget increased by 491 votes. Went from 372 to 863. Based on last week's vote, the total budget stands at $61,780,822. This is a 2.9% increase over the current year's budget. According to the town charter, the next step in the process is for the town council to set the mill rate. Charter says within 30 days of the budget vote. Town staff is recommending a mill rate of 34.62, which is 0.78 mills higher than the current rate. It would increase taxes by 2.3%. Recommendation includes the $100,000 reduction to the education budget and a $40,000 increase in investment income based upon the town's latest estimates. That's a change from what we had presented earlier because we received some updated information on our investment income for this year. We felt comfortable raising that particular revenue estimate by $40,000. The budget still includes a payment for the teacher's pension as recommended in the governor's proposed budget. That amount is $107,640 and does not include the increase in ECS to Plainville as proposed in the Appropriations Commission Committee's recommendation, which is an increase, which would be an increase if approved of $15,706. There are significant doubts that the state budget will not be adopted at the end of the legislative session, which is scheduled to happen on June 5th. Although that was one of the governor's highest priorities, was to get a budget in place early and often, well, at least early. But it doesn't look that that's going to happen, and it may not even happen before the session's over. There is an item on our new business regarding the setting of the mill rate for fiscal year Next item I have is the Water Forum discussion. Last Tuesday evening, a public information forum was held at the middle school to hear a presentation of the Valley Water Hardness Removal Evaluation. That was done by Ty and Bond. Representatives from the State Department of Health, the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, and the Plainville-Suddington Health District were in attendance. In addition, approximately 35 residents attended the forum. The study concluded that the most cost-effective way to lower the hardness of the water was to put an ion exchange treatment system at both well locations. According to the study, this would lower the hardness from what's known as very hard category, which is above 180 parts per million, to the mid-range of the hard category, which is the mid-range, the range of the hard category is between 120 and 180 parts per million. The estimated cost of the treatment system is $3.66 million and would increase operating costs by about $99,000 per year. According to Valley Water, rates would increase by 18% for the users. For example, residents that currently pay $30 a month would see their water bill increase by $5.40 a month. The increase would be higher for those whose monthly water bills are in excess of $30 per month. Valley Water is hesitant about installing this ion exchange system because they do not believe that the majority of their customers want to pay more for these improvements. Some residents attending the forum disputed the methodology used by Valley Water to survey their customers regarding the willingness to pay for the hardness removal equipment. Town staff plans to meet with state officials and Valley Water representatives in the near future to discuss the public comments from the forum and to determine what steps, if any, would be appropriate. Next item I have is the road bond program update. The last paving season for the five-year road bond is expected to be completed by July 1st. This project covered roads that were last repaved pretty much in the 1980s. There have been a couple of roads that were 1990, 1991, but the majority of the roads that were paved during this five-year program were roads that were last paved in the 1980s. Town staff is preparing a recommendation to propose a second five-year road bond program, and that would mostly be for the streets that were last paved in the 1990s. Further details regarding Phase 2 will be presented to the town council probably sometime in June. Just giving you a heads-up with regards to that. Next I have is the financial dashboard. Unfortunately, Scott Colby wasn't able to make it in today. He wasn't feeling well. And so I'll present the financial dashboard and it's through April 30th, so through the end of April. Town budget on the expenditure side is running pretty close to what it has in past years. Town government budget, general government budget, running pretty close to, you know, the two-year average. Board of Ed is running a little bit ahead of the two-year average, and, you know, the reason for that is, you know, has to do with health insurance. We're paying that as we go along as opposed to, you know, spacing it out a little bit further because we're at the state program. We continue to run high in the police overtime. We're running higher than the two-year average, and, you know, I feel at least relatively comfortable that we, you know, that the council, you know, raised the amount for next year. We're actually exceeding the amount that we budgeted for next year. $562,000, you know, we raised that budget to $550 for fiscal year 2020. Hopefully, the numbers will come in a little bit lower next year. Our two-year average was $511,000, so there's, you know, there certainly is a possibility that we would come in lower than that. Roadways overtime is running under the two-year average. That's not snow overtime, that's just roadways overtime. Buildings and grounds overtime is, we've spent our, over our budgeted amount, we're about 104%, you know, we're at 104% of what we budgeted. We expect that to increase over the next couple of months because of, you know, the fact that they work on weekends, you know, cleaning, you know, cleaning, helping out, you know, as the parks open up. Roadways overtime, snow, came in just slightly over budget. It's been significantly over budget in past years at $54,000 compared to $50,000 budgeted, below the two-year average. Buildings and grounds, snow overtime is above the two-year average. Buildings and grounds does, you know, a lot of the snow work around the schools, which are, you know, trying to get them open in time. We are running ahead. People are throwing out more trash. So just so you know, we're about 327 tons above our two-year average right now. That equates about $20,000, just so you know. On the revenue side, all revenues are coming in pretty much, you know, slightly above our two-year average. We've collected 98.37% of what we had budgeted for all revenues. For current taxes, we've received 99.98% of what we budgeted. So I feel pretty confident we're going to reach 100%, hopefully on both of those numbers by the time we get out through the end of June. Fund balance has not changed from the previous month. It's at eight point, almost $8.2 million, about 14% the total revenue side of the budget. Special funds, recreation fund, you know, running pretty close to budget. Most of our revenues get collected in May and June for recreation. Robertson Airport, numbers look skewed. Most of that is because we don't have in the budget, we don't budget the projects and Finance Department puts the projects in there, you know, the improvement projects. This has to do, we spent a lot of money on the apron projects. But, you know, our fund balance in the Robertson Airport fund now stands at $563,000. Water Push Control Authority expenditures, budget expenditures, running pretty much in line with the previous two years. We've spent 86% of that $3.36 million budget. Revenues are running, we've received 103% of what we had budgeted on the revenue side for water push control user charges. Library budget expenditures, we're running under our previous year's amounts. We've spent $598,000 of the $722,000 that was budgeted. On the revenue side, the percent received looks a little bit low. It's because the Finance Department accounts for our trust funds. They've actually decreased in value, but the revenue we receive from the trust funds is, come in at the budgeted amount. So we expect to collect 100%. That number is just, looks a little lower because we have the value of the trust funds in there, which, you know, unfortunately have decreased a little bit. The Library Board of Trustees has made plans to switch their investment, in fact, they already switched their investment advisor over recently, and they expect that that will help with regards to their trust funds going forward. On the major projects report, you know, park improvement funds, we spent monies on the concession stand, new bathrooms. Turf field project is closed out, you know, per the council's direction, which was, some of the money, you know, went towards the turf maintenance funds, some of it went back into the, to buy an item in capital improvements, dealing with lights. No really other changes. I would point out that we need to update the phosphorus removal project. It's not, it doesn't have a negative balance right now. It has to do with some monies that were spent before we went out the referendum on, you know, on the design. You may recall that the council authorized some expenditures before we started the project to design it so that we would meet the deadline. That was looming with regards to being able to secure the 50% funding for those items eligible under the phosphorus project. So I have to work with Rob to make sure those numbers match up. But we're not running a negative in that, in that particular project. I'm sure you have that. And that's really pretty much the highlights for the, under the dashboard for this evening. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them on that or any other items that we talked We did not do a March report. We did not do a March report.
Does anybody have any questions for Robert with his report? And the financial dashboard that we just looked at?
Robert, just a couple of quick questions regarding some of these projects that are almost done. Thank you.
I didn't look at my red light. There are some remaining balances in some of these that have been out there for a bit of time. Old Linden Street School, in addition to the Cook Street reconstruction project. Are there still items that, Northwest Drive rehabilitation? Is there still more work that has to be done on some of those? Or are we coming to an end of where we can start to close those out as well?
Well, just to remind you, the Cook Street project and the Northwest Drive rehabilitation were both 100% funded by the state.
Right.
There are some remaining balances. I believe we're waiting on a bill on the Northwest Drive rehab because you may recall that on the Cook Street project, if you've driven it lately, we put up a couple of those speed indicators that say how fast you're going and what the speed limit is, you know, that light up and they do have a little. We've got to add a couple to the project on Northwest Drive as well. I think they've been relatively effective in terms of reminding people how fast they might be going on a newly paved road. So the Northwest Drive rehabilitation, we still have a bill and we may even be holding a little bit of, are we holding any retainers on that project right now? Okay. Cook Street, are we still holding retainers on that? That project can probably be closed out. I may want to talk to the state about, we have a balance of $121,000 in that account. I may want to talk to the state and see if there's anything else that we might be able to perhaps squeeze out of that to, that might be a benefit to the town. But we probably should close that project out.
Okay.
If we're able to close it out after Tom Andrews speaks to the state, it'll be closed out by June 30th, assuming there can be some conversations finalized before then.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions about their report?
With regards to Old Linden, we have a balance of $289,000 in that account. I know that some of the state revenues came in a little bit under what we anticipated. So not spending those, that remaining balance might help to balance that off. We'll try to give a report to the council in the near future with respect to that project and close that out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. We have no happening. So we will move into our public comment section of the meeting. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome residents or whomever is here to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. I have one person that has signed to speak, and then I will take anybody from the audience that wishes to speak to the council. So Catherine Labella, Catherine, you're first.
Good evening. Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. I oppose alignment see of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail or any alignment that negatively impacts Pierce Street and other Plainville neighborhoods. On Thursday, May 16th, a man attacked a woman in a Hampden Walgreens parking lot, shoved her to the ground while attempting to steal her purse. Someone saw what was happening and pulled the man off of the woman. Where did the man run after this attempted robbery? He ran toward the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail where police were still searching at the time of this story. On Thursday, May 16th, police lined Route 372 in Plainville from the fire station to 50 West. While I have seen nothing official about this, and I ask you why, a post I read indicated that it was to prevent a biker fight between two rival gangs meeting at a local bar. The post indicated that police from other communities had to be called and were present at the scene. I greatly appreciate the police presence, but wonder why Pierce Street residents and other local neighbors did not receive notification through the new red alert system. Many of us walk to and from 50 West at night, and those of us with dogs walk them for the last time before bedtime in that area. As a matter of fact, shortly after Ken walked our dog one last time that very evening, I heard a man groaning several times with a woman's voice asking if he was okay. These people were close enough to the condo to be heard through open windows. With the police presence, I was concerned that something untoward was happening. This could easily have affected Ken and Trina R. Beagle had they gone out later. Why am I talking to you about these events? You are creating the perfect storm with the proposed location of the trail through Plainville. The trail location will expose cyclists, skateboarders, and walkers to places frequented by people with a propensity toward violence. The trail quickly runs from neighborhoods to isolated sections of town where people can easily evade the police after committing a crime. Sections of this trail are sufficiently isolated to be perfect areas for illicit drug use and other crimes. Council members, town employees, what are you doing to this small, once pleasant town? I respectfully request that this statement become part of the public record along with the council minutes. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken? Please come to the podium.
John Kissler, 65 Forestville Avenue. Good evening, town council members.
Good evening.
I too was at the last Board of Education meeting, and there was really an unusually large amount of people there from the public that had nothing to do with the Board of Ed or the administrators, which I thought was pretty good. And quite a few people spoke. But one comment I want to make is on our Chairman Paglisi speaking under Citizens Comments. My opinion, you did an excellent job. I mean, that was really great. Trying to get these people to work together as a team, the Board of Ed, and with the administrators. And I think that's something that we really need, and I think you showed that. And I hope that the Board and the administrators are listening to you. And your Republican team should be real proud of you. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken yet?
Forrest CNC Avenue. Oh, Gail Black, Forrest CNC Avenue.
Thank you.
Excuse me. This comment is for Mr. Lee. Now, I received the Plainville citizen the other, on the 16th, and it said how there was going to be a water meeting on the 15th. I don't have the internet. How am I supposed to find out? Why can't you put a notice in the paper the week before?
Well, yeah, sure. Robert, Mr. Lee explained, we have really promoted this widely for several weeks, once we had the date and the time. So the timing of the newspaper putting it in is sort of out of our control. But we have sent out notices. It's been talked about here. And I'm going to ask Robert Lee to speak about that because this has been on the agenda for several weeks, so.
We gave them the press release the week before. It could have made it into the week before's newspaper. For some reason, they didn't put it in the week before's newspaper.
No, I found with the paper, you have to put it in two to three weeks ahead of time because I tried to get in a comment and went in really late. So they don't do it.
I'm just, normally they would for the town, but I don't know why.
I would like to think they would do it for the town.
Normally, they would for the town. So we got it in before their deadline. They didn't put it in the week before.
No. But, you know, like I said, not everybody has a computer. And I still, to this day, think we need a new pump on, off of Woodford that, at one of the last, the original meeting, I think, they said it was built in 1940. That's an old pump house. That's totally old. And you folks at one meeting here told me to try the health department. So I did. And then they called the water company, and they called me. So it just went all the way, it didn't, it didn't work. It didn't work that way. So I blew the water company off because I knew I wouldn't get anywhere. On the goods, oh, one thing, as a non-parent, I would like to see money returned for the sports for the middle school. I think that's a really good thing. And the other thing is, I went a few weeks ago up into the northwest corner, and I found, I went to this town, and I used to think we had potholes. We looked beautiful. This town, Winchester Center, it's way, way out. I wouldn't drive out there in the winter. And you go from one pothole and you want to skip that one, you have to go into another pothole. It was incredible. But it was worth it. I was going to, like, graduation for service dogs. At any rate, I just wanted to let you, let you know that I was shocked when I came back here at how good the roads looked.
Thanks, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Just before we get going, my timer isn't working this evening. So I'm watching the clock, and I may get it a little wrong. So don't hold this against me. But it's okay, Joanne, just letting you know. I'm trying. I don't have my timer working.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. A number of municipalities in Connecticut have passed resolutions against imposing tolls on our highways in Connecticut. We have I-84 coming through town, and we have a number of people coming to town to work and leaving town by I-84. I would like to request that the council consider passing a resolution condemning the tolls and joining other, the other municipalities that have done that. Have you considered that at all up to now?
Actually, that has not come across our radar. But I do know that there's a number of cities and towns that have done that. And the legislature is aware of the thinking on that.
Okay, well, I mean, it couldn't hurt to pass a resolution like that. You'd probably get a little publicity either in papers, the television, or even radio. I mean, that's where, you know, I've heard a lot of these from other towns that have done it. And seeing that 84 passes right through our town, it seems like it would be very beneficial to our citizens that if you would, you know, consider it and hopefully pass a resolution. I realize it doesn't carry any weight other than, you know, affecting public opinion and making the state legislators aware that, you know, it's become a very, very unpopular extra tax on the people. So could I ask you to consider it?
Well, you know, of course. I'm, I'll be certain to talk to my colleagues here and see if that's something they're interested. I know this vote is coming upon the legislature fast and furious. So we'll certainly discuss it.
Sounds like your timer's working.
Yeah, 30 seconds, that's what that means. Now it's working.
Okay. All right, well, we got the citizens to respond to a budget vote by, what was it, 10 or 11%, which is commendable, seeing that our usual average is five. Somehow, we got it up to seven. It was just too bad to see the shameless way that they, the Board of Education had to threaten the people with removing, I hear it, removing sports from the middle schools. I'm sure if they were considering removing an administrator or redundant staffer somewhere, they never would have got the 10% out. So I find it manipulative and shameless, but it got 10% of the people out to vote.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Edmund, Joel Edmund, 63 Hollyberry Lane. Two weeks ago, I didn't get to finish. So I'm going to try to do that tonight. And I forgot my glasses in the truck. But I think I can do this. Many townspeople who are aware of the negatively impacting consequences know that it will be obviously detrimental to our neighborhoods, roads, parking, and accessibilities, the environment, and also Norton Park. Consider this, a linear park through Norton Park. How stupid is that? Almost similar to the circus that never leaves town. A migration trail from Connecticut Fast Track in New Britain to the heart of Plainville. How undesirable does that sound? How long before the out-of-town trail designers decide to extend it to the city of Bristol? Like my sister Joanne says, there's trouble. Trouble in River City. I say, you ain't seen nothing yet. On another note, and this is two weeks ago, there is one lonely peeper, otherwise known as a tree frog, that apparently cannot attract a mate in the area of a muddy mess that has developed in the old historic portion of the Plainville Canal just below the newly ongoing noisy construction of the extension of the Condeale Lane subdivision. I imagine the bog turtles, the bog turtles and various other aquatic life here are having a tough time of it. I bring this up because word is at the rails to trails, but no rails will also possibly be slashing through there somewhere yet to be finally announced unless the powers that be can see to finally put a stop to this foolish bike and walking trail. Recently, the town of Glastonbury is investing precious funding for planting new trees to accommodate their loss of dead and dying trees due to the drought diseases, old age, insect invasions of gypsy moth and emerald ash borers. I say this because the out-of-town trail planters are considering devastating thousands of trees in the way of the construction zone that they have proposed to invade the important wetland through the limited forest alongside or on top of the original existing mule hall trail. What left, what is left of it? No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you.
And good evening, by the way.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. First thing I'd like to ask about, this has to do with the budget. The police, we seem to go through this every year overtime with the police department. And the question that keeps coming to my mind, do we have enough officers on staff with the police department? Or more importantly, is there a rise in crime in Plainville?
Well, the chief, during our budget deliberations, we discussed this with him, and he said he is fully staffed, and, you know, he has, you know, there's limited capabilities for training once you have too many people. There's lots of reasons why the overtime occurs, some of which is mandated that the officers need to stay after and file reports. If there's an incident that has to go to the court the next morning, they have to stay and do that paperwork. So, there's a lot of things that are contributing to some of these overtime situations. That's an example of some things that are out of their control. They simply have to do some things that probably didn't exist some time ago.
So, that means we're looking to an increase in the police budget?
Well, we're increasing the overtime. We're -- council voted to increase overtime in next year's budget to try and address some of that.
Okay. Secondly, if I could, that's just a quick response to this. You had mentioned about the money coming from the state, the 15,000. Now, that's being for the schools?
It's ECS money, which is the education cost sharing grant that we get every year. It's an additional -- it's in addition to what we had already been notified we would be receiving. We are hoping this will happen, of course. We won't know everything.
No, no, I understand that, but this is addressing the school system.
It's identified as school grant money, yes.
Okay. And will we find out whether they accept it, what the final verdict will be within the school system with that money?
Actually, the revenues come through the town side, and Rob Buden will see that because the revenues all come into the town, so he's going to let us know if that happens, and then we'll have further discussion.
And we'll hear about it in the town council meetings.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The last thing I wanted to ask about, and this is more curiosity than anything else, I'm looking at this major projects report, and down here, we have the Plainville High School Turf Maintenance Fund, and the project budget, there's none there. But then I look to the right, and it says revenue to date. Where does the revenue come from?
There has been, in the past, some money allocated by the Board of Education to be dedicated for turf replacement. This is an expensive replacement. As the turf fields get on in age, they're going to have to be replaced, and at some point, the board puts some money in there. Some of this other money that is in there, as Robert, Mr. Lee said, comes from the closeout of the turf field project, so some monies are being put into that maintenance fund. That's where the money came from, unless there's more.
There's fundraising efforts that are done by the Backers Association. There's -- and there's also, they also charge fees for other groups to use the turf fields at times, and that money goes into the maintenance of the maintenance fund as well. There is not a budget for that because they're saving up money for -- there isn't a budgeted amount. There isn't a project amount because we don't have a project yet, so it's estimated that when the turf field needs to be replaced, you know, eight, nine, 10 years from now, it'll probably be in the half a million to $600,000 range. So, you know, but there isn't a budget. You know, there isn't a budget. It's just to let people know how much is in that fund on a monthly basis, that's all.
Just for me, the donations coming in are coming in from the school board, from the school itself, the school system. Do I have that correct?
No, it's from the sports organizations that are raising money to --
Sports organizations other than the Plainville school system?
Yes.
Right.
And if that were to drop, and apparently, we're looking at it, this thing won't drop, if it were to drop, where do we get the money from? I mean, donations are a wonderful thing, but sometimes people run out of money.
Well, that's certainly going to be a question that's going to be answered when that project comes due, and whether there's going to be other ways to fund that. That will be discussed at that time, but it's some time out, Mr. Frangos, before, hopefully that will happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I, for the record, for Carol, I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that negatively impacts Pearon Road, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway Street, and into the park, the Mule Hall Trail, anything that that awful path is going to destroy. And I just want you tonight to think about an alternative, just nicely. Let's just talk about it. Please, instead of going right out Northwest Drive towards Johnson Avenue, can't we just go left and head down to Route 10, preferably Route 10, because that's marked already? And then, if that's impossible, why not, I believe it was called Alignment G, which runs on the far side of the industrial park, and I believe there is a path there already, a walking path, that can be expanded. That would head you straight towards the center of town. I mean, not into town, but close enough, so whoever's walking along that trail, like they said at that March meeting a couple of years ago, or a year ago, whenever it was, they wanted their pieces of a pizza and bottled water. My God, they could stop themselves because they'd be that close to everything. And they'd be headed towards Route 10, and they would have all kinds of food at their excess. So, I believe that that is a, that would be a good alternative, and that would get it out of backyards and front yards and off the streets that don't need it in a very, very heavily trafficked area. So, so much for that. I just want to say, I was at the Board of Ed meeting, and I can't believe that the Board of Ed, some of the Board of Ed people treated one of their members so badly. As I said that night, I was one of the speakers, but I hope that going forward now, they're going to treat that person with a lot more respect. She's doing a great job. It's not an easy job, and I hope that she has afforded all the respect and cooperation that she deserves. Now, I will say about that night, three people hit their speeches out of the ballpark, and that was Kathy, John, and Roberta. Honestly, you did a great job, so it was noticed, and thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Nicole?
Nicole Plumer, 20 Julie Road. I just wanted to add a couple of things. At the last Board of Ed meeting, we voted unanimously for Steve LePage to be our next superintendent, so I wanted to mention that, and thank everyone that came out with this budget this past Tuesday. It wasn't the best outcome, but we're happy that it passed. Our graduation is on June 18th. I think the town council will be getting an email about that, and just let Jo know if you want to attend. And on Thursday is the super senior banquet, so we will be attending that. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay. I'll close the, that portion of our meeting, public comments, and moving on to old business. We have no old business. We have two items under new business. Item number one?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to set the mill rate at 34.62 for fiscal year 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Nice to see that we got a little bit more revenue. Every little bit helps. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other items for discussion, Mr. Lee?
Not from my end, though.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right. We don't have an executive session, so I may have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.